Okay, so we are here today because our United States representative, the second congressional district, is here to talk with us and let us talk with her. I think you probably all know this, but Representative Tulsi Gabbard is responsible for handling all of the neighbor islands plus rural Oahu. There's another United States representative, Colleen Hanabusa, and she has downtown Honolulu. So Rep. Gabbard has everything else in the state. We also have two senators, Mazie Hirono and also Brian Schatz. And Brian Schatz, by the way, is having a town meeting next Tuesday in Hilo at 1:00 at UHilo Science and Tech Building. And Rep. Gabbard will have a second town meeting on the island in Hilo next Tuesday at 7:30 PM at Waikia High School. The agenda today, Representative Gabbard is going to make some remarks, and then we open up the floor for questions. And as I said earlier, even if you weren't here, I said it, you may ask questions from the floor or you may ask questions in writing, and we have a number of questions already, and we will do our very best to get them answered. If you'd like to ask a question from the floor, Kainoa Penarosa, who is Rep. Gabbard's chief of staff, who is here somewhere, where is he? He'll come in in a minute, and he's got a yellow pad, and he will sign you up, because we'd like to take folks in the order in which they signed up. But we've also got plenty of written questions. If you have a question and you put it in writing, if you put your email down, your phone number, Rep. Gabbard and/or her staff will get back to you. I also would ask that, as you think about your questions, please try to focus on issues that are the purview of United States Representative Gabbard, i.e., not county issues and not so much state issues, although she may choose to address those as well, because she knows a lot. But really, that's what this is all about today, is looking at the responsibilities that our United States representative can address. Also, as always, this is not a candidate forum, so we're not going to tell you to hold all your applause and boos like we usually do in candidate forums, which I'm often privileged to moderate, but we do ask that you continue to show what everybody on Hawaii Island always shows, and that's respect and aloha to whoever is asking a question and whoever's answering a question. And if you do have a question, please try to truncate, just ask the question. Without further ado, I would like to introduce to you our United States representative, Tulsi Gabbard.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all so much for coming out this evening. What a wonderful crowd, and I think it is indicative of the interest of a lot of the things that are happening here in Hawaii, across the country, and around the world. So before we open it up into Q&amp;A, I'd like to give you a brief overview on a few of the issues that we're facing right now in Washington. I think one thing that has dominated a lot of the headlines over the last several weeks, not so much this past week, but a lot of the last several weeks, is the issue of health care. This is one that we have gotten a ton of phone calls and emails about in my office and that I've heard from a lot of folks here in Hawaii, not only health care providers, but also people who provide different social services, different nonprofits in our community who rely on or receive some form of federal Medicaid funding for their services, whether it be through the juvenile justice system, providing counseling to kids who are going through that, or those who are providing mental health services to different parts of our community, whether it's the homeless or others. There are so many different issues and concerns that are around because of the uncertainty about the future of health care. As many of you may know, there was a bill that was talked about but that never received a vote in the House of Representatives called the American Health Care Act. This was a bill, frankly, in my opinion, was a terrible bill that benefited insurance companies and pharmaceutical companies at the expense of people who need health care the most. It provided for over $600 billion in corporate tax cuts for these industries while cutting Medicaid funding dramatically for over 200 million people across the country. There are conversations still happening. I left DC on Thursday afternoon, and we were told literally as we were walking out the doors, I was getting on the plane, that the Republican leadership had passed some kind of procedural rule that would allow them to call all members of Congress back to DC early before we are currently scheduled to return for votes, because they're still working on rewriting this health care bill as we speak, and if they feel they get enough votes, then they may call us back in. The problem is, as they are rewriting this, nobody knows what's actually in it. There are many different changes that are being made, even to the bill that never made it to the House floor, that many Republicans are not even aware of. So for so many reasons, this is a cause for concern, most importantly which, we've got to know what we're voting on and what the impact in our communities will be. So that's a stay tuned on that one, because the wheels are turning, and there may be some movement relatively quickly, and we're watching it very closely. Obviously advocating for the needs of our communities and making sure that whether it's our kupuna or those most in need, that they're not getting left behind. There was one particular provision that I found especially offensive in that original bill that essentially levied an age tax on our kupuna, that said those who are seniors may be charged up to five times higher premium than someone who is young and healthy. It makes no sense whatsoever, and it's offensive to the most basic culture that we appreciate here in Hawaii of respecting and taking care of our kupuna, but just the basic decency. There's also some talk, and if you're watching some of the political news or the cable news, you may have gotten wind of it, right now, the government is only currently funded through April 28th. Congress is scheduled to go back into session on April 25th. Need I say more? There's essentially three possibilities of what we'll see here, and I'll tell you why this matters, obviously, to us here in our community. How many of you remember the last government shutdown that happened a few years ago? It had devastating effects on people, obviously those who work directly for the federal government, but also those ripple effects as they impacted our communities in such devastating ways. So there's one of three things that'll happen, the worst, which is the government shuts down because Republicans can't make a deal on how to make sure that the doors are kept open and the lights are kept on. The second possibility is that a continuing, is what's called a continuing resolution is passed, which essentially says whatever the government is currently funded at will continue for a certain period of time, which in all likelihood will be six months to finish out the rest of the federal fiscal year. This is better than a government shutdown, but it is not good because county government, for example, if there are federal funds that have been promised for either new investment in infrastructure or new construction on buildings, for any federal agency for that matter, none of that new, no new projects can begin. So things that were planned for, things that people are expecting to begin, none of that can happen. So basically, things continue at status quo. And the third option is that a supplemental budget is passed for the remaining six months. This is the most ideal, but also the most difficult, because it will require a consensus agreement, either with Republicans or with Republicans and Democrats, which I think is ideal, but this remains to be seen. Again, this is another thing, that there are not current negotiations happening between Democrats and Republicans, and there's not a current proposal sitting before Congress for members of Congress to review, and we will go back with three days to get this done. We're going to get to some good news eventually, I promise. The good news is all of you are here, and we're in this together. That is truly good. That is truly good, and at a time when things look dour, really, truly, being able to represent all of you in Washington, being able to represent the aloha state and understanding the true meaning of aloha and doing my best to bring that to Washington every day is a very special thing. I want to talk briefly about a bill that I've introduced. Some of you may have heard about it, and this goes directly to what has been in the news the last few days with regards to the war in Syria. Last December, I introduced a bill called the Stop Arming Terrorists Act, and I'll explain a little bit about why this bill is so important. What many people are not aware of is that right now in Syria, there are two wars being waged for years now. The first war is the war to defeat terrorist groups like ISIS. This is a war that is serious, and we must win. And the second war is another counterproductive regime change war to overthrow the Syrian government. This is counterproductive, because any action that moves towards this objective of overthrow of regime change in Syria basically strengthens terrorist organizations like ISIS and Al Qaeda, who have been fighting on the ground in Syria for years with that objective of overthrowing the Syrian government so that they can take over that country. So my bill, the Stop Arming Terrorists Act, came about after a recognition and realizing that for years covertly, in the dark of night through the CIA, our government has been providing arms, intelligence, salaries, and other types of support to armed militants in Syria who are directly allied with terrorist groups like Al Qaeda. We have been providing support to armed militants who are allied with and often under the command of terrorist groups like Al Qaeda. The danger in this and the counterproductive nature of this doesn't take much explanation. Evidence of this has only in recent, maybe the last year or two, started to come to light, been reported by outlets like the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal. What has also come to light is that indirect funding has also been provided through countries like Saudi Arabia, Turkey, and Qatar, all towards this shared objective. So the fact that we would be using your, our taxpayer dollars to strengthen the, directly and indirectly, these terrorist groups is something that is a no-brainer and must end. This is a bipartisan bill that we've introduced in the House, and Rand Paul, a Republican in the Senate, has introduced it there and is working on building support in the Senate. People ask me, what is, what, why is what is happening in Syria important to us here in Hawaii? Why should we care? The cost of these wars and the consequence of continuously waging interventionist regime change wars, we have felt directly here in Hawaii through the loss of our sons and daughters, brothers and sisters, moms and dads. We have also felt this directly through the trillions of dollars that have been spent on these wars, money that we don't have and that we desperately need to be investing here in our communities here at home. I can tell you, we've been going through, over the last month, my team and I, different appropriations requests specifically for Hawaii, whether it's education, infrastructure, health care, housing, mental health support, I mean, the judicial system, every single sector of our community, expressing the need that we have here. This is why what Secretary of State Tillerson said yesterday, "We rededicate ourselves to holding to account any and all who commit crimes against the innocents anywhere in the world," essentially saying that the United States will now act as the world's police, without any regard to what that actually means. What does that mean to American lives? What does that mean to American resources and the needs that we have here at home? This is why, through my service on the House Armed Services Committee, as well as on the House Foreign Affairs Committee, for all the years that I've served in Congress, for the year that I campaigned and asked you to hire me for this job, I have been fighting to bring about an end to this counterproductive interventionist regime change war policy that has cost us so much, so that we can focus on rebuilding and reinvesting in our communities and our future right here at home. There are a whole host of other issues that we've been dealing with in the last couple of weeks, from civil liberties and privacy issues to different rules and regulations that the Republicans in Trump administration have repealed, that the Obama administration had most recently put in place, veterans issues, a whole host of issues. I look forward to getting into the questions and answers with you. So with that, Sheri, I'm going to close my opening and intro and look forward to hearing your ideas, your concerns, and your thoughts. Thank you so much.
Something I forgot to mention, which you already know, if you have cell phones, please silence them so that we can focus everything we have on Rep. Gabbard. She mentioned that she's on the House Committee on Armed Services. She's also a member of the Subcommittee on Emerging Threats and Capabilities and a member of the Subcommittee on Readiness. And on the House Committee on Foreign Affairs, she's a member of the Subcommittee on Asia and the Pacific and a member of the Subcommittee on the Middle East and North Africa. I'd like to know where Father John Schrodel is, please, because you, as soon as the microphone carrier gets to you, you're going to be making some comments. He, Father John, has some comments about Syria, but while the microphone holder is on his way, Rep. Gabbard, in such a hyperpartisan atmosphere where it's pretty clear that the Republicans not only control the House and the Senate and the White House, that Democrats will be less likely to be able to get legislation passed, give us a brief look at how our US congressperson can in fact continue to serve us when in some ways your hands are tied, as are Senator Schatz, Hirono, and Rep. Hanabusa.
Yeah, thanks, Sheri. This is a very relevant and important question, given the current political environment in Washington. You know, one of the first things that I realized going to a Republican-controlled Congress from a small state like Hawaii with a delegation at that time that had very little seniority was the need to bring aloha, the need to build relationships, so that even as, you know, with a Republican colleague, we may disagree on, you know, nine and a half out of 10 things, that other half of a thing that we can find agreement on, we've got to be able to work together to be able to serve you, to be able to deliver results for my constituents here in Hawaii. The two committees that I serve on, in Armed Services and Foreign Affairs, are two of the most bipartisan committees, where unfortunately, it has become a rarity in other committees, but we actually do have debate. We actually do talk about the merits or the pros and cons of a certain idea, bill or amendment, and the outcome is not predetermined. Unfortunately, that is not the case in most committees in Congress, most bills that make it to the floor, the lines in the sand are already drawn, saying, well, this is a Republican bill, so Democrats should vote against, or vice versa, which is unfortunate. So what I try to do and what I'm continuing to do is, for each bill that comes forward, look at it for the pros and cons, and I, my staff will tell you this, for the bills that are coming through as we go through our analysis, it's a simple question, does this help the people of Hawaii or does this hurt the people of Hawaii? So I think that there are opportunities, and we look for them on a variety of different issues, to find areas where we can work with the majority. For other areas and other issues, there's no common ground to be found, and we speak up strongly in opposition, as I did with the health care bill that never made it to the floor for a vote. I'll give you just a quick example of something that I'm actually quite proud of, that we were able to get through. There's a number of things that we were able to get through, but an issue that was very partisan was the Native Hawaiian Education Act, reauthorizing this, something that Senator Inouye and Senator Akaka worked together on over 30 years ago to put into place was expiring, and I was told that Republicans, by and large, would be against this, as they have been many times, but we worked hard to be able to bring this amendment to the floor as part of a larger education bill. And because of a lot of the relationships that I had established, when this bill was coming to the floor, many Republicans were being told to vote against it, and they started calling me and texting me and talking to me on the House floor, saying, make your case. Tell me why I shouldn't vote against this. Tell me why this is important to your constituents. And ultimately, we ended up passing that amendment, and it was included and signed into law because of that basic respect in saying, look, we may not agree on everything, but you have that rapport and that conversation that is open, and we were able to make our case successfully. And so that's what I'm continuing to work to do on a whole host of issues.
Thank you. Ilhia, Ilhia, could you take the microphone to Father John? Okay, Father John, Ilhia is letting you have the microphone. Don't abuse the privilege. This is the Reverend John Schrodel. He's with the Orthodox Church in America here in Kailua Kona. So I know you have some brief comments about Syria.
Thank you. I wanted to say first how proud I am to have Tulsi Gabbard as our representative here. We need to realize, we're on a big island, but we need to realize that we have a treasure in her, and she's not only our representative, but really, she has a lot of attention from all over the world because of how brave she's been in standing up to almost everybody on these issues of war and peace. And this is, this is wonderful, and I'm so grateful and proud of you for that. I have been following this situation in Syria very closely for at least six years, I mean, since before the beginning of the conflict. I have friends that have gone to Syria like Tulsi has, and they've come back saying the exact same things she has been saying. If you haven't seen her videos, heard what she's been saying, it's all true. I want you to know, it's all true. And our church, last December, we launched a fundraiser, and we sent some money to our, the patriarch of Antioch, which is our, you know, about 10% of Syria is Christian, and most of those are Orthodox people, so we have kind of these natural ties through our church life. And our church there runs the second-largest relief organization inside of Syria. You probably know about the refugee crisis a little bit, but maybe you don't know that there's about seven or eight million internal refugees inside of Syria, people fleeing from their villages where al-Nusra, Al Qaeda, ISIS invade. They flee to the safety, you know, of the government-held areas, and our, these relief organizations, the Syrian Red Crescent, and then our church organization are taking care of them. So I was, right when we sent money over, I got word, oh, they're going to use it because this village was, you know, invaded by Al Qaeda, and they're trying to feed 9,000 people who were fleeing, and I said, yes, please, you know, use it for that. That's wonderful. Anyway, I want to say that the things our representative Tulsi is saying about this are not abstract. These are real people over there that, you know, we're not so far away here. The world is very small, and I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Father John.
That's mostly what I want to say, is thank you for all that work, and I'm so grateful and thanks to everyone.
Thank you, Father John. We're going to completely change tack right now. We're going to talk about bugs. We have a question here. Our island had, as everybody here knows, a dengue outbreak, and an editorial comment, not in the question, is that I personally do not think the State Department of Health took exactly the approach we would all have liked them to take. So we do need to look to the federal government at this point, because Zika is looming, the CDC is reporting that Zika right now is in all 50 states, although we have no locally-acquired cases here on this island or in this state. We do have both of the kinds of mosquitoes that carry both the dengue virus and the Zika virus. So Rep. Gabbard, we understand that you actually have done something to introduce a bill, but we need to know more about it and what the odds are of it. Go anywhere, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheri. Is Karen Anderson, there she is. Karen Anderson, for those of you who know her, was leading the charge with a few of her friends and neighbors, speaking for your community here, our community here, when the dengue fever situation was really at a crisis point and at its height. And she and the network that she established on Facebook, which was really quite real-time, providing more up-to-date information than many of us are getting through the news, has continued to keep people plugged in and informed, because even though the issue is no longer in the news, does not mean that we can afford to be complacent. So recognizing this, I worked with Representative Soto from Florida. As you know, they've also had, they also had some incidents there, as well as Zika, in introducing something called the SMASH Act. SMASH stands for Strengthening Mosquito Abatement for Safety and Health. As we saw through the situation that happened here, you know, resources is always a question, where do the resources come from to support the county's deployment of mosquito abatement, to support deployment of Department of Health personnel, to make sure that they actually have experts on the ground here who are making the right analysis and decisions. So what this bill does is basically extends the grant program through the CDC for its mosquito control program and emphasizing and giving preference to applicants who are or have been experiencing a public health emergency due to mosquito-borne disease. So as we know, the mosquitoes that we know carry dengue also carry Zika and a few other very dangerous diseases, and we want to make sure that the federal government is providing that level of priority and importance to the needs of communities here towards mosquito abatement, to make sure that we don't find ourselves again in a situation like you all did here in Kona not so long ago. What are the odds of this passing? This is something that we're actively working on and that we will continue to try to see how we can get it through on the House floor and through the Senate. It's important, as with all bills, that we get as many cosponsors as possible, as much support as possible on both sides of the aisle, as I know that there is, so that's what we're currently working on.
Thank you. The next live question will be from Vince Mott. So Vince, make yourself known, and either Ilhia or Kirsten will bring the microphone to you. And meanwhile, we have some questions about veterans issues. The first one is, you've been very active in trying to improve the Veterans Administration response here in the state and here on Hawaii Island, particularly for health care, and on March 31st, the VA appointed a new director for the Honolulu VA, which means for the state. Jennifer Gutowski was most recently in southern Arizona with the VA, and the veterans group wants to know, are you confident that this is going to be a good thing? Everybody knows that Arizona did have some problems, and although I wasn't able to find that Ms. Gutowski was part of that administration, we'd really like your input on that.
Thank you. I have not yet met her, so I'm going to reserve my judgment. As many of you know, in the last few years, we discovered that Hawaii's VA had the longest wait times in the country for veterans who were seeking their first appointment with a primary care physician in the VA. Longest time in the country, over six months' wait time. I had a wounded warrior fellow who was working in my office at the time. He was a combat medic. He served in Iraq and Afghanistan, and I didn't even realize this until long after I started speaking out and trying to bring about change in the system. He happened to mention to me one day that he had been waiting over nine months. This is a 30-something-year-old Iraq-Afghanistan veteran who had suffered from injuries, both visible and invisible, and who is still being treated for post-traumatic stress. He had unfortunately many other stories of friends of his who faced the same challenge and issue. There are a number of things that we've done in the meantime to continue to try to improve the process. One of them was something called the Choice Act. Some of you may be familiar with that. It basically says if your VA is not able to service you within 30 days, that the VA will pay for you to go and see a physician in your community, so that you don't have to wait longer than that 30 days. I introduced an amendment that was included in that bill that was actually that main provision. There have been some issues in the execution of this, where some folks unfortunately are still wading through layers of bureaucracy just to get that approval, to go and see that physician in their community, and that's something that we're still working out. With regards to the director of the VA health care system here in Hawaii, that covers Hawaii and the entire Pacific, we have not had a permanent director for over a year, since February 2016, when the last director when the last director abruptly resigned with no reason given. So we have cycled through around 12 or 13 temporary directors in the over, you know, 13, 14 months since, and some of them only staying for as short as a week. You can imagine how difficult it must be for the employees, for the service providers, and even for the veterans to have any sense of continuity and accountability and leadership, especially during some very tough and trying times. I worked with a Republican in Congress about a month ago, and we were able to pass legislation that would prioritize Hawaii as well as a few other states that were in that same position, who had had no permanent directors, getting the Secretary of the VA to take action quickly. Action has been taken. We now have a permanent director. I look forward to meeting her, and I look forward to hearing from all of you, or if we have veterans in the House who are seeking services. Are things improving? Are there still issues? I know there are still issues, and we're still working through some of them. But I always welcome your feedback to see how we can improve the care and the service that is, was promised and earned by our nation's veterans.
Thank you. We have one more veterans' questions before we get to Mr. Mott. The state has a veterans' treatment court, which was started with the benefit of federal funding, but that runs out September 30th. The requirement, we understand, is around $260,000 a year. So is this something that you think the Trump administration will continue to fund, and how can you help?
I sure hope so. For those of you who may not know what a veterans' court is, it's kind of similar to a drug court where veterans who are going through difficulties and may have run-ins with the law, nonviolent crimes, that could be attributed to perhaps invisible wounds that have not been treated. Veterans' Court gives them the opportunity to actually heal rather than simply be thrown into a cell and into our criminal justice system. I've been a strong supporter of this program. Judge Ed Kubo started this Anauahu. I put it, the submission into our appropriations committees in Congress to increase funding, not only maintain, but increase funding for this important program.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vince Mott is back there.
Aloha.
Aloha.
And welcome to Kona.
Thank you.
I've got a question that is filled with controversy just over the last few days. If Assad did not carry out the chemical attack, who else might have had the capacity and the motive to do so?
You know, we have seen different opinions, different theories, different ideas on what occurred, also what has occurred over the last several years in Syria. What I have been outspoken on is the fact that our president, in my view, recklessly launched a U.S. military strike illegally and unconstitutionally without consulting Congress and without giving care and attention to the consequences. There are very serious consequences to this. Not only this strike in and of itself to escalating this regime-change war, but given the fact that Syria is so closely aligned with Russia, that Russia has troops on the ground there. We've just seen Russia and Iran stepping up, I believe yesterday or this morning, basically saying, "If you launch another attack on Syria, we will reciprocate," that there will be consequences. We don't know exactly what those will be. But, you know, look, this is something that I learned very early on as a young soldier in training in the Army National Guard, is that for every action that you take, there is a reaction. There are repercussions and ripple effects that you have to have as a leader, the foresight and judgment to foresee. We see with Iraq and Libya, the lack of that, the lack of good judgment and the lack of asking and answering the questions, what happens the day after? What are the consequences to our actions there? And unfortunately, we have seen the failure in Iraq and Libya, and we've seen what the consequences are to these regime-change wars. These wars have been launched under the auspices of humanitarianism and helping to relieve people's suffering. But in both Iraq and Libya, and now in Syria, we are seeing in these examples that the suffering of the people in these countries has only increased because of our policies and because of our actions. The loss of life has increased. Refugees have increased. What to speak of the fact that when we look at our national security interests in each of these examples, terrorist groups like al-Qaeda and ISIS have grown stronger. The territories they control have grown. And they now have strongholds in places that they didn't have before. This is why it's so important that we recognize, especially again, as I mentioned earlier, Secretary Tillerson is starting to talk about the United States going and being the world's police. There are very serious consequences to this, especially when you have a president taking action unilaterally without respect to the role that Congress has in declaring war. This is something that I'm going to continue to press on, especially if the administration looks to conduct any future military action. Thank you.
Thank you. The next live question will be from Shelley Wilkinson. Make yourself known. And after we ask this next question, you'll be next. There are a lot of questions about healthcare. And this one is, can you speak to the good and the bad of the Medicare for All Act? And I'd say, please first explain it for those of us who have no idea what it is and your position on it. Because a lot of the people have written in on their notes that they are very concerned about the future of healthcare. And you did address it a little bit, but please do so more.
There's a bill before the House right now called Medicare for All, but it's H.R. 676. And I guess the simplest way to talk about it is that it basically expands what is currently Medicare, but it increases the eligibility to everyone to make sure that everyone has access to basic healthcare services. I'm a cosponsor of this legislation. I believe in principle that we have to provide this basic level of healthcare to all people, supporting universal healthcare. There are some parts of the bill, frankly, that I think could be improved. I think we've got to talk about how these bills are paid for. We've got to make sure that Medicare is actually enabled and empowered to negotiate with prescription drug companies, which currently Medicare is not. And again, we've got to just make, we've got to make sure that that access, not to insurance but to healthcare, exists. And there is a difference. And when you listen to some of the debate that's happening in Washington, a lot of people may say, "Oh, of course I support access to coverage for everyone." But when you ask, "What does coverage mean?" How you may define coverage may be very different than someone else. And this has been one of the most painful things that I've seen with the Affordable Care Act, which has done a lot of good in many ways, but what has been concerning in some other ways is that some people who think that they have healthcare coverage, when they actually need it, they go in and see that they've got a $10,000 or $15,000 deductible. That's not coverage, especially for people who may have been uninsured, who couldn't afford healthcare in the first place. So we have an opportunity as a country, as they're looking at healthcare, as they're talking about repealing and replacing, let's replace it with something that is truly a healthcare bill for the people, that cuts the insurance companies and the pharmaceutical companies out of the drafting of the bill, which we have seen. Unfortunately, we saw this with the Affordable Care Act. We definitely saw this with the Republicans' American Healthcare Act that recently failed. And in both instances, those signatures ended up on the backs of people who need care the most. We've got our work cut out for us with this legislation, with continuing to see, how do we improve this? How do we get feedback from our providers and folks in the community on this? And this is something that I'm looking forward to continuing to engage on.
Before we get to Ms. Wilkinson, one more health-related question, which relates directly to what you just spoke about. And this is a question that was submitted by some doctors, actually in advance of the forum. We have a doctor shortage, and in fact, a lot of places in the United States have a doctor shortage. But one thing that I've heard for years, and I now have documentation, our doctors are reimbursed at an amount that is commensurate with the way doctors in Guam are reimbursed. And the difference is that in every single category of service, our doctors can make, well, let's take an OB package, prenatal care delivery and postpartum or antipartum. In Hawaii, you get $2,100. In Alaska, you get $2,700. In Los Angeles, you get $2,300. And every single category is like that. So that is an issue with our doctors. Is that anything that our U.S. rep can do anything about?
Absolutely. This was something that was brought up to me by a lot of the local physicians, especially here on Hawaii Island, back in 2012, when I was campaigning for Congress. And I subsequently introduced legislation to address that, to bring parity basically between Hawaii and Alaska, being two states that are very different from the contiguous 48, where our residents have fewer options with regards to healthcare, where we often have a healthcare provider shortage. We've got to make sure that our Medicare rates are, our Medicare reimbursement rates are able to provide for those services and the needs, and to keep doctors here and providing those Medicare services. So this is something that needs to happen. We're going to continue to push our legislation, but also see as healthcare dominates the conversation in Washington, see how we can address this perhaps through other bills that may be moving as well. Again, this is a simple issue of parity, where Hawaii is essentially getting the short end of the stick.
Thank you. Shelley Wilkinson, question. Iliehia will hold the microphone.
Hi Tulsi. I volunteer for you here on this island because I believe in your integrity and your vision. So thank you for doing what you do. And continuing on with the theme of healthcare, thank you for cosponsoring the Medicare for All bill and speaking out against Affordable Care Act. And my question is, what can be done about the high cost of prescription medicine? The pharmaceutical companies are just gouging the people, and it seems like there's no accountability, so.
This is one of the toughest issues in Washington. And I just learned recently, the pharmaceutical industry in Washington spends more on lobbying than they do on advertising. And we all see those ads on TV. You know they're spending big bucks there. But this is how they've been able to buy their way into having a seat at the table as these healthcare bills are written. And we see the dangerous, the dangerous result when people who need basic care or serious care, different types of prescription drugs, are not able to afford them. I've been a longtime advocate for Medicare being able to negotiate those prices with pharmaceutical companies, as we see the VA currently has. But I've also recently signed on to legislation that would allow us to import from Canada, where these very same prescription drugs are far cheaper than any of our residents can get here. There's a number of different ways that we've got to tackle this. These are a couple of things that are on the table now, but it's something that we've got to continue to talk about and expose because the status quo has been in existence for too long, and it's literally gouging not only people's pockets, but having an impact on people's lives.
Thank you. Next live question will be Zahava Zaidov. And you'll only get one question. Sorry, you don't get two. Oh, it says two. Oh, Z. Thank you. I thought it was a two. So now Iliehia knows where you are, but we will first ask this question about invasive species. After tourism, which clearly is our biggest economic driver here, agriculture is a very important and growing part of West Hawaii's economy. But of course, along with agriculture dependence comes a higher risk of invasive species. And it's a big issue. And our State Department of Agriculture is grappling with it, but there's also federal issues involved. Please address.
You know, this is one of those areas that I have found bipartisan interest and support for because the same challenges a lot of our farmers and those working in our ag community here are dealing with also impact those who represent Republican districts that have strong agriculture industries. We were able to pass legislation that helped provide funding to go towards the coffee berry borer crisis that Kona felt the brunt of. There is so much more that needs to be done, both in the research side of things and how do we prevent farmers from having to deal with this in the first place, proactively, but also in dealing with the eradication of this pest. We've introduced and are working on passing legislation to deal with the macadamia nut-felt coxid, another invasive species that's impacting our macadamia nut farmers, and working on an overall invasive species pest management legislation that would place it at a higher level of focus and priority, again, proactively, to try to make it so that our entire industries are not being wiped out by a single pest that ends up spreading very quickly and in a devastating way. It's not, you know, one of the hottest topics to talk about, but you all know more than most what the impacts of these invasive species are in so many respects here in your community. So this in the agriculture sector is something that's been and will continue to be a focus of mine. And we're working with folks on the Agriculture Committee in the House to be able to find, again, bipartisan language that can be supported and have found support, both from local farming organizations as well as national folks who recognize the seriousness of this.
Before we go to Zahava, apparently somebody's seeking a job. Talk about how many interns you hire into your office. How does somebody get to be an intern? Keisha, wherever you are, listen.
We have phenomenal interns that come from Hawaii through every semester, including summer. It's a hot ticket. So if you're interested, just, all you've got, it's not complicated. Give my office a call or send us an email. Is it Keisha? If you find Kainoa Penarosa in the back, make sure he gets your name and phone number and gets your information. Oftentimes, these slots fill up. We get anywhere between three and five. We run out of desk space is really our limit. Three to five per semester. So get your name in early. You can also apply online. Yep. Usually, they fill up, what, about six months in advance or so? So I think our summers are already full, but for the fall or winter. I promise you, you won't be making coffee. We put our interns to work. You get to help me analyze legislation. You get to help me look at the correspondence we're getting from our constituents here in Hawaii, do research and provide solid responses, and also attend committee hearings and a whole host of other things. So it's interesting and very substantive work.
Sounds like fun, actually. I might be applying. By the way, I know that there's a flyer out there that has all the contact information for Rep. Gabbard, for all of you, for Kainoa, for you, and for the whole team. And it's also online. So you can do that. Z. Oh, that's your whole name, is what you're saying. I get it. I'm slow. Ms. Z, AKA Zahava Zaidov.
I appreciate you being here. I have a question about the Jones Act and where you stand on it. It took me a while after moving here to understand what that meant. And from U.S. port to U.S. port, the ships have to be built by Americans, have to be staffed by Americans. And South Korea and a couple of other places have figured out how to build ships for a fifth of the price. And the issue that I find is that to ship a 20-foot container from Southern California to Hawaii is $5,000 to $8,000. But to ship the same container from Southern California to Tokyo is $880. And so I believe that part of the high price that we're paying for goods here in Hawaii is as a result of the Jones Act, which was 1920s. And I'm wondering where you stand on it and what we can do about it.
Thank you. Good question. There's two issues to really think about when you talk about the Jones Act, is obviously the cost. There have been very few comprehensive studies done talking about the actual impact on cost of goods and cost of living in Hawaii solely related to the Jones Act. There's one study that I'm familiar with that kind of came out with an inconclusive result. The two issues that, I support the Jones Act, just say that upfront, for two main reasons. One is that you touched on, which is American jobs. This is critical for us as we talk about our domestic economy, as we talk about American jobs and unemployment rates. But there's also a national security component as well as we look at our maritime security. But there's also a national security component as well as we look at our maritime security as well as the fact that these ships can sometimes, as they have been even as recently as the Iraq War, be commissioned into use for the shipping of goods to troops overseas. So they basically get commissioned for federal service, which we do not have a fleet that is big enough to fill the need during those times when our country is at war. I think there's a lot of opinions and there's a lot of interest in it. And I think like with any legislation, there should always be room for saying, how do we improve this? How do we make sure that it's meeting the needs of the community and the needs of the country? And that discussion I know will continue. And I hope that there is another study that is done to really look at this and to address some of the issues that you're raising so that we can address those needs for our community. Thank you.
Rep. Gabbard, when I asked the invasive species question, I missed the question underneath, which is little fire ant. Do you have any plans to introduce legislation similar to that which you've introduced for other species relative to the little fire ant, which as everybody knows is an invasive species here on this island and a huge problem?
Yeah. This is one where while we've introduced specific legislation with regard to macadamia nuts and coffee farmers, the overarching legislation that I mentioned basically is there to address a whole variety of invasive species to include the fire ant issue that we see prevalent, unfortunately, too much here in Hawaii. So this is something that each island has a different set of invasive species that may be affecting them more than another. And we're trying to provide more resources to be able to address those as well.
Thank you. Marshall Blumstock, stand and be recognized. And Iliehia, please.
I can't hold it.
Iliehia has his instructions, Marshall.
Yeah, and he's bigger than I am. Am I too old to be an intern?
I do not discriminate based on age, Marshall.
So many things going around in my head. And I am on your side. I believe in peace and I want to see us stay in peace. I just got back recently, I think I might have told you last time, I recently came back from the Middle East. I was in Jordan, I was in Israel, and I was in the Palestinian territories. I met with settlers, I met with Palestinians, Druze, Bedouins, I met with Israeli secular and the Hasidic. So I met with a lot of people there and I got a big perspective on things. And one of the things that, let's see, you, the way I understand it, you said that you would like the Syrian people to decide who their government is. And that's good in the abstract, but the reality is it was the Syrian people that protested against Assad and then Assad started claiming them to be ISIS and invaders and all that kind of thing and started to shoot them. So that's a dilemma. That part of the world was created by Churchill and the French, and they put lines around and made countries and put people in power. So there's been despots there for a long time. Now, I understand, I don't want to go change regimes either, but I want to be smart about what's going on in that area. And everybody agreed in the countries, oh, another important thing is in Jordan, and this is, in Jordan now, there are no, there are no Palestinians, there are no Palestinians in the camps anymore. They have been integrated into the society there, which I think is wonderful. They're full of Syrians now. We're bombing Assad because of the kids, and yet we're not letting them into this country to protect them. How do you feel about that? What is your solution?
Thank you, Marshall. I mean, you've raised a whole host of issues that we could do a whole town hall on, on those alone, very serious foreign policy issues. Look, I think the way that I approach these different issues as they come before us, both from the foreign policy and foreign affairs perspective, as well as the question of how and where our military is, should be used, and just as importantly, where our military should not be used, is within the context of really being, taking a realistic view of the situation and what is it in our best interest, first and foremost, as the United States? We've got to make sure that we're acting within our best interest. And secondly, what will the consequences of our policy or our action be? And that has been my position throughout this evolution of the situation, which is, again, pointing out the reality of the consequences of our regime change wars and making sure that we don't continue to make those same mistakes again in the future. This is what is troubling to me about where this administration has gone, even in the last few days, in a very reckless direction without considering what those consequences are. And taking us from a place where throughout much of the presidential campaign, President Trump was promising his supporters that he would end our interventionism in the world and that he would take those trillions of dollars that we've been spending on these wars and put them back into our communities here. He's essentially stabbed his supporters in the back, done a complete 180, and gone in the opposite direction, full speed ahead. This is, to say it's concerning is putting it mildly and is something that, you know, the Congress is going to have to take action on, but is something that the American people are going to have to step up because it is our communities and our families that will pay the price for this. I think that what we saw happen with the $100 million that Trump spent on launching 50 missiles into Syria is just the beginning. I hope that's completely wrong, but what is that? 300, hundreds of millions? That's coming out of your pockets. And for what? Without clearly outlining an objective, a strategy, an outcome, a consequence? It makes no sense. Thank you.
Claire Lepinski, you are the next up for the live questions. Please make yourself known. But first, Rep. Gabbard, would you like some water? Yes. Have some water. Let's let the woman have some water. So meanwhile, you can be thinking about your response about our education system because the question is, how will you support our nation's education system with Betsy DeVos as Secretary of Education? The National Teachers Union opposed her, obviously you know that. So the question is, what you think the best path forward is and what needs to be done next and what you can do? Please. Okay, on to the next question.
It's hard to know where to begin with this. You know, our state superintendent, who's going to be leaving her position soon, Kathy Montioshi, was in DC recently, had a chance to sit down and talk with her as she spelled out what the direct implications on Hawaii's kids will be if the budget that was put forward by the president for the Department of Education was actually passed. And, you know, I don't have the list that she gave me in front of me right now, but some of the things included completely eliminating any training, educational, professional development for teachers. Completely slashing that line out of what has previously been funded. After-school programs, gone. Not minimized, not reduced, gone. There are a number of other things that she went through line by line that, you know, it was kind of jaw-dropping when she pointed out really what the practical impacts here would be. You know, I don't know exactly how the Congress will or won't work with Secretary DeVos, but I do know that there are a lot of Republicans who have similar concerns and who are hearing from their superintendents, from Republican or Democrat states, doesn't make a difference, about how these programs will affect their schools. Another issue that was brought up was the free and reduced lunches, the program that provides for making sure that kids get food who otherwise would not have food throughout the day if not for that free and reduced lunch, those most in need. Again, this is coming from states that are red states, that are Republican states where people are exercised, teachers, principals, superintendents are saying, here are the practical consequences of what this budget will do. As you know, presidents propose a budget to Congress every year. It is just a proposal. Congress has the responsibility and the authority to actually write and pass a budget. And I've expressed a number of my concerns to some of my Republican colleagues who say we are going to maintain our authority in making sure that we pass our own budget. So as we go through this process, we are going to continue to speak up for Hawaii's keiki, our teachers, our faculty, our principals, those who provide service in schools like this every day. We have to be that voice. The White House. So I really do hope that we can work with them on a good budget that addresses needs in our communities, that addresses needs within our schools. And that's something that I look forward to being able to do and actually getting passed.
Okay. Before we go to Claire, is there any way to stop the repeal of the fiduciary rule requiring financial advisors to act in the interests of the client, which is one of the many things that the Trump administration has pulled back on?
I don't know.
Okay, no.
I don't know. You know, there, we've seen a number of executive orders coming out. We've seen a number of rules and regulations that the Obama administration had passed that have been repealed within the timeline that allows for that to happen. You know, as these issues come up, we are, it is public awareness. It is you being here, it is you raising your voices that is having an impact and us being able to work with you in doing that. Again, so people in Congress, people in the media are reminded about the actual consequences of these changes that are being made.
Okay. Claire Lepinski, I think that the microphone is coming to you. Again, we only have about 13 minutes left, so please keep your question pointed.
Aloha, Tulsi. I'm hoping that you're taking good care of yourself and how you're doing. You know I'm a traditional midwife and you know that I'm deeply connected to the generations that are coming in. You know I'm connected to the pico's of this island because that is how cultural practitioners work. I want to thank you for standing up and standing rock. We have to stand for our Mauna. And I can tell you right now, I live Honocohal Malka. I can tell you from 5:30 to 8:30 in the morning, there's three flights of military going over there to bomb. I can tell you at 3 o'clock in the morning, I keep track, I hear them. I can imagine what it would feel like if I was a veteran. But in, for me, I hear it. And then we go up there and then from, usually at 10 o'clock, it depends on when it's clear and when the moon's. We have planes coming from Guam, dropping a bomb and leaving right now. We've got six more states in here. And in July after this, we'll have 126,000 bombing us again, 125 nations. We want peace. We are aloha island. And you know I also have my citizenship in Sicilia. Same thing. It wasn't just Yemen, it was just those you mentioned. It's seven wars that we're in over there. So my heart is in both of these places. And I'm saying, you know, we have to pretend that, protect that Mauna. We have to. So what can we do? I'm also, we are also very concerned about the depleted uranium, about those young soldiers up there with no mask up there. We have asked over and over and over again for studies. We know there are, we're taking it, we're collecting bones, we're taking the test. There is depleted uranium. I feel for these young boys. I feel for all of them. And for our next baby, this is our DNA. This is our island. This is our Mauna. What do you want us to do? Have another standing rock here? Because that's what we're going to have to do. What should we do, Tulsi?
Thank you very much, Claire. There are, it's engagement. It is engagement so that you don't have to get to the place where you have a mounted standoff, as we saw unfortunately occur there in North Dakota. It is engagement, awareness and information about some of the things that you're raising, but a whole host of other issues that are not being talked about very much with regards to what is happening here, whether it's the issue of TMT or the issue of PTA, what is happening here within the native Hawaiian community, what is happening here with the homesteads, whose kuliana is the Mauna. I've met with and talked with different folks who are bringing different perspectives and who have different ideas on a path forward. And the most important thing that I think must happen is that proactive engagement early on in the process now, before you get to that point where there is no longer any conversation possible. I think that is in the spirit of what we try to do here in our community, and that is the same message that I'm delivering to folks within the government, within the military, within different stakeholder interests who do have a stake in what happens, what is happening and what will happen in the future here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next live questioner will be Pamela Hicks. But before we get to that, Rep. Gabbard, this person has two questions and it's basically how you feel about the LGBT community and how you feel about people who practice Islam because they are saying that there's online claims that you do not support either.
Don't believe everything you read on the internet. Lesson number one. It is incredible how much garbage there is out there. And you've talked about two things. I have been endorsed year after year by the Human Rights Campaign, the number one advocate across the country for our LGBTQ community. And I'm proud of the 100% legislative rating that they have given me on legislation that has come before Congress because I believe in our free society. I believe in our constitutional right to the freedom of religion. So those who are making accusations on either of those issues are unfortunately uninformed and uneducated about my positions and my views. And if you have questions, I would love to be able to share with you my statements that I've given and my record on this so that we can, as I just mentioned, lift, lift the cloud and make sure that folks are informed on these issues. I had a chance recently at Rutgers University in New Jersey to speak at the 10th Annual Mohammed Day Muslims for Peace Celebration that they have there, which was a really beautiful multi-faith celebration, recognizing the importance of a non-sectarian secular society that not only appreciates and respects, but celebrates the religious freedom that we have in this country and how important it is to not be complacent and to speak out against those who try to incite bigotry and hatred and divisiveness based on the religion or spiritual path or no spiritual path, depending on what a person chooses to do or believe in their lives.
Are you Pamela Hicks back there? Are you going to ask the same question you already wrote up here? Okay.
Straight to the question. Are you willing to support a bill that would require term limits for members of Congress?
Good question. The answer is I don't know. And I'll tell you why. Because I have seen in some states that have passed term limits for their state lawmakers, how the level of accountability has gone away from the elected member of whatever the legislative body is. And because the power has been transferred, whether they stay there for one term or two terms, the power has been transferred to the professional staffers, salaried staffers, who are the ones who are there, meeting with different interest groups and different folks and who are essentially providing some form of continuity. So I'd be open to the conversation, but I think we've got to think through what are the consequences of this. I think ultimately, through our democracy, members of Congress are accountable to you. And you have the opportunity to fire me every two years or to say, okay, we'd like for you you to continue the work that you're doing. We've seen how this has worked in some unexpected ways. We saw in, let's see, I guess it was 2016, or special election happening earlier, where the House Majority Leader, Republican Eric Cantor, I think who raised more money than any other member of Congress, who gave more money away than any other member of Congress, building up his own power base, was taken out in a primary by a guy who was completely unknown, who maybe spent a few thousand dollars. I don't think he spent much. He's an economics professor. Completely overwhelmingly defeated in that primary election. So as we have it now, the accountability is there with those who you choose to vote for or to not vote for when every election comes around. If there's a term limit conversation, let's have that conversation, let's have that debate. But I think to me, the most important thing is, you want to be able to have me answer to you, not some staffer who's sitting in my office, who's been working in government for 10, 20, or 30 years, who has no reason to come before you and answer your questions. Thank you.
Rep. Gabbard, there was an issue that you intended to address in your opening, but you did not, and that is the issue of medical marijuana.
Thank you.
And what happens, there's many states that have medical marijuana, but as everybody knows, the Attorney General for the United States is planning to shut things down, so help us understand.
Thanks, Sheri.
And we're getting close to the end of our time together, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you for bringing that up. I worked with, again, here is another issue of bipartisan support, believe it or not, a Republican who was newly elected from the state of Virginia named Tom Garrett, an Army veteran, a former prosecutor. He and I have teamed up and have introduced the bill that would decriminalize marijuana by removing it from the Schedule I of the Federal Controlled Substances Act. This is something that, it's a no-brainer, and I've appreciated, since we introduced the bill, I've done a number of interviews, both with, you know, local Hawaii media, radio stations, and others, some of them who, while we're having the conversation on the air, have said, hey, you know, I never thought of it that way. You've just flipped my position from being against this to supporting it. And it really comes down to a few things that are very basic and very simple, in case there's any on-the-fences here on this. All this would do would decriminalize marijuana by taking it off of the Schedule I of the federal controlled substances list, where it currently resides alongside heroin. The FBI report recently came out a few years, about, I think, 2012 or so, saying that every 42 seconds, someone in this country is arrested for the use or possession of marijuana. Every 42 seconds. So when you think about that, and you think about how people are being turned into criminals for the use or possession of a substance that has been proven time and again to be far less dangerous on themselves or others than alcohol, I hope that gives people pause to think about, something's not quite right here. Think about our criminal justice system. Last time I was home, about a month ago, I spent time going and visiting a number of our prisons, seeing their dilapidated condition, seeing how overcrowded they are, and seeing how many of them, young kids, they were there for drugs, nonviolent crimes. Young girl, 20-year-old girl on Maui, she was very open. I was glad to have a chance to talk story with her. She said, I don't know a single person who's not using drugs, not a single person. So rather than addressing that situation, we're throwing people in jail, at a great cost socially and a great cost fiscally. And this is where there's opportunity here, as we talk about criminal justice reform, as we talk about the fact that states like Hawaii, who have legislated and passed medical marijuana dispensaries, what is the impact of that? I've talked to local bankers, as early as last night, people who provide workman's comp insurance, federally regulated industries in our state, who are very afraid, or who have said, no, we will not work with any medical marijuana dispensary. We want to allow you to open a bank account because we're afraid of being thrown in jail by the federal government. So you end up with a total cash industry, where even employees working at these medical marijuana dispensaries won't be able to open bank accounts because it's drug money. You have workman's comp insurance providers who are literally afraid that they or their employees may be thrown in jail because of this contradiction between state and federal law. So what our bill does, and what we're working to build more support around in a bipartisan way, decriminalizes it, so that those states like Hawaii who have legalized medical marijuana, or those who have gone farther and legalized it completely, or those states who may have stringent penalties and have chosen not to legalize it in any form, it leaves it up to the states to deal with it as they choose, and it removes that contradiction that currently exists in a pretty dramatic way between the federal law and state law.
I'd like to ask Derek Hall to please come to the front. He's with the Global, what is that? GVS, Global Value Accelerator. And Rep. Gabbard, while he's doing that, one more question. We've got several people who want to know, are you planning on running for president in 2020?
Do I say no, or do I say pass? I think both apply. I'm really happy and so grateful to be able to work for you. I really mean that. And people ask me, like, even now, even with the political environment that you're dealing with in DC, and Sheri asked me that earlier today when I saw her, and especially now, especially now, there are so many challenges that we're dealing with, both locally, nationally, and around the world. I continue to be grateful that you have entrusted me with this responsibility to be your voice, and I'm grateful to you for that, and we'll continue doing my best in that way. Thank you.
This is like, what is that? What game show is that? This is Derek Hall of the Global, I don't know why I can't remember the V, Global Virtual Studio Accelerator.
So before we close out here, it's always awesome to recognize great things happening in our community, and I'm really glad that this worked out, Derek, for you to be here on behalf of David and your team here in Kona. The Global Virtual Studio Accelerator was awarded with the 2017 Small Business Success Awards at the federal level, so I've got a little plaque here from the United States Congress to say, congratulations. Thank you for being an outstanding small business in our community. Mahalo. Some of the best, the best parts of what I get to do is recognize awesomeness in our community. Before we close, I want to say thank you first and foremost to all of you for spending time here tonight. I hope you found it a valuable use of your time. If you weren't able to get a question asked or answered, we've got cards at the table. You can write down your name, your email, your phone number, and your question, and you will get a response. I want to say a quick mahalo, first and foremost, to Sheri for moderating so well this evening, and for all that she does in our community. I want to say thank you to Keala Keiki Principal Mark Hackelberg. You still here, Mark? Who's floating around here. Thank you for letting us use your school. There he is, in the back. Thank you for your hard work every day for our keiki. I want to say thanks to my team and our volunteers who came together. Thank you, Kirsten and Ilya, for running the microphones around the room. Mahalo to all of you. Thank you so much. And thanks to everyone who's been watching on Facebook Live. Aloha. Thank you.